All right, good evening everyone. We are here for a specially announced special call of the city of Charlestown. Gathering of the council members, it's not really a council meeting, we don't have action items on this agenda. It's designed to be simply a workshop to discuss redevelopment, the role of redevelopment in the city and where the city council fits in with that. And so, Council President Brian Hester thought it would be a wonderful idea since we have several new council members and because the city is growing and we have a lot of opportunities for redevelopment to step in as help. He thought it would be a really good idea and I agree with him to have Jill Seges there and those from Wheatley Group come and just do a presentation for the council and for the, you know, for the general public. So we are live streaming this gathering as well. It's a great time to ask questions, so if you need clarification or anything, feel free. It's a super casual environment. Like I said, there's no agenda because there's no action items tonight. It's just an education opportunity. So with that said, I will have Jill's ready.
Yeah, I realize that, yes, it's one of those days, I apologize.
No, it's okay, it's Monday, it's Monday everywhere.
Would you mind if I say, oh, thank you.
I'll be busy.
And I want, what I'm doing is giving something to Renee so that you can show it if you want.
Oh.
If you don't want, that's okay too. I don't need you to show anything.
Okay, if you don't need me to.
No, I don't.
Okay, don't worry.
If everyone else is okay with it, then we don't have to go back around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Only Brian will be there.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And just in case there are, I don't know, Don, if we keep formal, the records are just a notice that we met for a workshop, but just in case we do, I guess we're attending conferences. We can let the record show that all council members except for Brian Hester are here at the moment and that Councilman Hester had a bit of a delay, but I expect that he'll be here later.
Yes. So, thank you. I'm Jill Seges, I'm with the Wheatley Group. I know some of you, some of you I don't. But also with me is Nick Lawrence, he's the president of the Wheatley Group. So, a lot of what's in this package, some of it's a little wordy, so I'm not going to read all these things to you, but we thought it would be a good reference material for you to take home a look at. And, you know, hopefully you'll learn a few things, but please ask, you know, questions. So, if you flip to the page, it's overview and agenda. What our purpose here, as the mayor says, is we want to talk a little bit about what we do and what we do for the city, but also go through some redevelopment commission powers and duties, as well as talk about what incentives are available to the city and what tools the city has to use to promote economic development. So, on our agenda, we're going to talk about, like I said, Wheatley Group services and our role, powers, I've hit these. And then if you get down to specific tools, tax increment financing, something else, and Councilman Hester asked that we do this, just to make sure and explain any acronyms that we may use. For those of you that are new on the city council, you'll find that people come up here and talk about things and acronyms. And so, we tried to explain each of those in this handout as we might talk about them. So, tax increment financing, single-family residential tax increment financing, tax increment financing strategy, build operate transfer, tax abatement. And then we have some case studies here from Charlestown where we've used these tools to help in that development. It's also important to remember that not one body, so the mayor can't do all this by herself, city council can't do it all by themselves, redevelopment commission can't do it all by themselves. It does take an effort to work together and in some of these, as we'll go over, you'll find that even if the redevelopment commission chooses to do something, that the city council has to, has to agree with it and adopt it and approve it as well. Not everything, but some things. So that's important to know that you do have to work amongst yourselves, even with plan commission, and then outside entities like local utilities, local economic development, official state and federal agencies. No one can do this on their own. So next we get into the Wheatley Group, a little bit of background on our company. We have over 50 years of experience in redevelopment itself. And we have several former redevelopment directors. Paul Wheatley is our principal. I introduced Nick Lawrence, he's our president. Nick, and since he's here, I'll get pick on him a little bit as far as he was the former redevelopment director of the town of Clarksville. We have two former redevelopment directors from the town of Clarksville, Dylan Fisher. I came from a community development background. I was at River Hills Economic Development District, which provides services mostly in grant-seeking administration. So, in my professional life, I have worked in and for Charlestown in some capacity for over 25 years. So it's exciting for me to get to see all of these things that are actually coming to fruition and that have taken longer than the last four years or eight years. So, but my background's more in community development. And I won't go into a whole lot, if you have questions about that, we can certainly, oh, and to round it out, Jacob Arvidal, who does a lot of our entitlements, does a lot of our interpreting different planning and zoning. He works mostly on the private development side. We have both public clients and private clients that we work with. And you'll see on the next slide, there's a nice diagram of the different counties that we've had projects in, where we've worked with them publicly, or have had projects with private entities in those counties. We do redevelopment project management and coordination. We do strategy development, economic impact and financial modeling, tax credit and incentive evaluation, which is one of the things we're going to talk about this evening. Excuse me, tax payment, what we're going to talk about this evening. Site selection, we have federal program, big funding experience, as well as GIS experience with Jacob on our staff. And we do also some owners rep and government relations. Do you have any questions about, the role that we serve in the city of Charlestown is, Redevelopment Commission has engaged the Wheatley Group. I started the Wheatley Group in the fall of 2019 and this Wheatley Group was already engaged with the city of Charlestown. So we do an annual contract with the Redevelopment Commission to help them function as staff, help put the agendas together, help do project management. So any of the projects the Redevelopment Commission is doing, we have our hand in it one way or the other to make sure that the project moves forward and that adequately staff that project for the city. I have regular meetings with the mayor. I invite the Redevelopment Commission members to meet anytime they would like to meet, especially the new ones, just so that, and Councilman Deaton's shaking his head because we had a meeting to talk about all the different things Redevelopment Commission was doing. If you all have any questions, you're all copied on the packets that we send out each month. Redevelopment Commission meets once a month, first Tuesday generally. And if you have any questions about any of that, feel free to reach out and I'll be glad to sit down with you. Something to remember too, as we go through this, whenever there's a project that Redevelopment Commission is considering and it's going to require some type of approval from the council, generally come and present it to the council as well. Or may actually meet with some of you beforehand to make sure that you're comfortable with it, to make sure we can answer any questions that you have. We were very busy over the last several years in some of the developments that you can see and we'll talk about in the case studies. One is Forest Edge, the new apartment complex, this way. The other is Shadow Lake, that development there, we had several meetings beforehand to talk about that, presented things before the council. Just want to make sure that you understand and have your questions answered if we can answer. So Redevelopment Commission's, just the formal duties of the Redevelopment Commission, this comes right out of the state statute, but investigate, survey and study areas in the unit that need redevelopment. Study and combat factors causing an area to need redevelopment and select and acquire areas needing redevelopment. In our case studies, we've done this. Our two primary case studies are Forest Edge and Shadow Lake, where we've implemented a lot of these tools and we've done these things, just to kind of keep that in mind as we, as we keep going. So their main, Redevelopment Commission's main goal is to maintain and fortify the economic health of their communities. So it's a very important function. Now we get into TIF, or Tax Increment Financing. So that's a tool for economic development and activities where you capture the increase in the tax increment. And we have a diagram here in a couple of pages that will explain this a little better. And I'm going to ask Nick to jump in whenever he thinks that I missed something or if he has some things to add. But that is to, you know, a lot of what that tool is, just I talk in more plain, just in how I would like it explained to me, so. So I apologize if you feel like it needs to be more technical, but, you know, the whole point in TIF is to bring investment to an area that normally wouldn't have that investment if not for this designation and the revenues that would be earned from that project to revitalize that area. So it uses the increased tax revenues in that allocation area to pay for capital improvements. And again, we'll go through this in case studies and so I may repeat myself, but for me, it's easier to explain that as we go than to wait till the end. But Shadow Lake, for instance, the Redevelopment Commission used TIF in that and was $4.5 million to do storm drainage improvements, the extension of Quality Court, Dan Christiane Parkway, those roadways that you see, that otherwise you couldn't access that property without these roadways. And the intent of that was to do that in order to spur additional investment. So if not for the city doing that TIF and capturing that increase in assessed value to pay for those improvements, then those improvements may not happen on their own. And something we do as part of our Redevelopment Commission contract is to help evaluate, when people bring those types of projects to the commission, we help evaluate those and see if, you know, if you're getting what you should get out of that. And help to evaluate how much someone is requesting as to whether that's, if that's in your best interest or not. So why would you utilize TIF? Property assessments are held at a baseline level in an allocation area. So, excuse me, and that baseline office increases with trending by annual neutralization. You would use it to, if you were going to bond, to pay for those infrastructure improvements, like I talked about with Shadow Lake, that typically leverage private investment. And we'll talk about the dollar amounts that there, that's hoping to leverage that we base our calculations on and our TIF bond on. And as the tax increment increases, those bodies can use that increase to satisfy debt service. And that's exactly what we're going to be doing in our two case studies that we're talking about. So next we get to the diagram, which explains it a little bit better. So if you look, there's a, and I'm sorry if some of you are colorblind, I kind of forget about that sometimes, but there's a blue box at the bottom that says base assessed value. And so without the TIF being designated and without those increments, then that level will stay that way. So that assessed value will stay that way and that is distributed over all the taxing districts. So the schools, the, come on.
It's a candle and bar, it's just a workshop, really. That, of all this page.
Yeah, around that page. There are page numbers here, but it's hard to see. So.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding.
So without this TIF, those assessed values, so Wheatley Shadow Lake is an example. If not for the investment and not for that TIF, then that assessed value would have remained constant until somebody actually did some investment or did some projects on that, which was going to be hard to do without some help from the city. So with those projects, we'll bring on Dan Christiane headquarters, their shop, they intend to have some industrial users out there. There's also intent for possibly some commercial retail further down the road. So as we build that road there, those roads and that infrastructure, then these developments can come, which will increase your assessed value. And then over the time period, which the TIF is, has a sunset date, it's 25 years after you first incur debt on it. We have debt on that TIF, the Shadow Lake TIF, so that starts the time, or the clock ticking for 25 years. So after that 25 years is over, then all of that assessed value then goes, passes through to all of your taxing districts. The schools, the, depending on how your fire departments, that library, all those other taxing units that get money from property taxes and such through the city. So the theory is if not for that initial investment, then you wouldn't have been able to raise your assessed value. Nick, do you have anything to add about that or?
The only thing I would add is that redevelopment in and of itself has its own kind of vocabulary, much like public finance, about, you know, council. And so we do have a little bit of vocab, definitions at the very back, so we have the base assessed value and the allocation area. Those all mean something. It largely doesn't mean anything just in conversation, but the allocation area is specific for a designated area is defined and is approved. And it contains parcels and that's where the creates the TIF or the TIF district is, you know, what it's referred to. And so, you know, it does have its own verbiage. Always ask questions, never hesitate, we're happy to explain and provide context for any of this. And don't be intimidated by any of the language on it or the math line, we can break all of that down and make it very simple.
Thank you. Because I'd like to tell you the back two pages have TIF vocabulary for you to use if you want to know what any of that is, it's here. So on the next page, common TIF projects. Rehab of sewers, construction park facilities, rehabilitate buildings, roads, driveway, drainage, rail, land acquisition, the city's used TIF money for those things, which we'll talk about in a little while. Police, fire stations, municipal buildings, other utility improvements, educational programs. A lot of recently, number of redevelopment commissions within the area have entered into agreements with local school systems to help them with educational programming or projects. Incentives for new private investment, which is what we predominantly talked about for Shadow Lake, that was one of the reasons for doing that, and road and sidewalk expansions. So it can be used for other things too, but these are just common uses. If you have any questions about, about that at this point in time, please feel free to stop me or Nick anytime you have a question. As the mayor said, it's pretty informal, so we want to make sure that, that we're answering your questions. You don't want to have Nick talk about single-family residential TIF, which is an animal in and of itself.
And so, just to kind of piggyback on what Jill had said, the TIF districts are set up, the general rule of thumb is that you use the TIF, the revenue that's collected, in the TIF or benefiting the TIF or serving the TIF. So that does give you some flexibility and latitude, but there is a geographic tie back to, to the benefit of that allocation area. And leading in, segueing into single-family TIF, for the most part, historically speaking, TIFs have been established that are, you know, single projects serving or are diversified, larger geographic areas with multiple parcels in them. And they're generally commercially driven. The reason and purpose behind is to get that, those 2%, 3% taxpayers. And for the most part, even more diversified TIFs, the, if you had a single-family owner-occupied residence, you couldn't collect TIF on that. So if a new home was built on a vacant lot and it was a single-family owner-occupied, that 1% cap taxpayer, the increase assessed value resulting from that would be, would not be caught captured within the TIF, it would be zero on that. And then you constantly have to refill any loss in value or changes that really hasn't happened a whole lot lately, which has been a lot of increase in assessed value. I'm sure a lot of you all know, get your tax bills on your own, things have been trending towards increasing lately. But for the most part, single-family residential housing sounds. So in an attempt to keep up with the demand and need for housing in Indiana, the state legislature adopted in 2019, a new statute that allowed for the capture, the creation of single-family residential allocation areas and the capture on these 1% under-occupied homes. The idea was to provide a development-based incentive that was primarily infrastructure-driven to take vacant lots, vacant areas that otherwise couldn't be developed or were challenged by a lack of infrastructure and provide a mechanism in place to encourage capital investment improvement in what would become single-family residential under-occupied housing. That is the mechanism that was in place to, that was enacted in 2019 and that has evolved a little bit over the past handful of legislative cycles to change the way in which the allocation area is created. It used to be there was, you had to create a residential housing program and then you had to have a series of public meetings. If you had a series of public hearings, you had to go to overlapping and effective taxing units. There were additional steps at the public and open meeting level that were above and beyond what you would usually have to do to create a traditional TIF district. In 2023, some of those requirements and steps were removed to make it a little bit easier to clear that pathway. The trade-off of making it a little bit easier, again, it's still a public, publicly approved process, there's still public hearings, there's still a residential program meeting that has to occur. But a few of the steps have been augmented and removed with the intent of making it more palatable for folks to implement. Again, it was done to encourage the establishment, to encourage single-family housing. And so, the trade-off for that is that the timeframe for the TIF has been reduced from 25 years to 20 years. So you have a shorter borrowing window, but you have an easier pathway to, to get them established. And that's, that was again the overall trade-off. That is in effect until July of 2027, or 2027 at that point, the old rules from 2019 go back into effect. So again, the intent is targeting, single-family, targeting intense single-family within a dedicated defined geographic area and being able to provide incentive, likely a reimbursement level incentive or you probably would have to use to really enact and make it work. You probably have to use another existing fund, edit existing TIF, et cetera, and probably reimburse yourself over the time being. It's getting a little down to the weeds, a little technical on the use of it, I know. But it just takes, it takes a lot of single-family housing to generate the type of AV that you would have with a traditional commercial investment that's strictly based on the property tax caps, the two and three percents, and then the deductions that you would get. And then the deductions that you would get on top of that as a homeowner. So just a tool that's out there. It's the ideas to make it a little bit easier to be used, to get the outcomes that the state of Indiana is trying to get in communities. And now it's created and directed to a single family.
Question. Have you used any of these yet, the single-family residential?
So we've worked to establish probably five throughout Southern Indiana. I'm working on another one right now in Southeast Indiana. It's going to be a large slough and try to take a larger area with the idea of trying not to get too definite and more or less following the comp plan, which allows us to cover a larger geographic area and chase development as the market allows it rather than respond to an immediate opportunity.
Because I noticed it said that there's a lot of scrutiny from the DLGF and affected school boards. So you'd allow school boards to buck this?
Never have I had one.
Because I know, school sys, I, when I first got elected, the CFO set a meeting up with me at Brad Park County and came and said, "We don't want TIFs, get rid of the TIFs because it's taking money away from the schools." So I didn't know if you had any issues?
Never, because the other flip side of the coin with single-family housing development is usually that everyone's kids. And the kids are valuable at the end of the day to the school budget and by and for it, right? So because those two, early on in the process, the original rules, you needed to be joined and attached with the school corporation in pursuing it. I don't get a lot of heat and flack on it, generally as policy. We make sure that the school is informed, follow statute anyway, that they have to be informed of the action. They have to be notified with a tax impact summary statement to create the TIF, just like you would a regular TIF. But the intent is to, you have to have a lit hearing at the beginning of this and announce that this is what you're going to do. You have to discuss the residential housing program, what is you're trying to accomplish. But no, I haven't, and all that I've established, that we've worked to establish to date, the school's been lockstep with the strategy with the intent of bringing in families.
Brian, just for the council's information and for yours. So last year, every year, there's always general reaction on TIFs, and they try to do something with TIF. And last year, Andy reached out to all the communities within Mears in particular and asked our relationship with our school boards and our school corporations and stuff. And overwhelmingly, people responded, and most of the people are getting along fine with their schools. Because a lot of cities, and we're one of those cities, we have a really good working relationship with the school corporation where we work in partnership with them on things. And so Mark Loffner, superintendent, and I'll meet pretty rarely. And he actually, I mean, we're both reformed TIF haters, right? So once upon a time, I wasn't sure about TIF, it used in some way. And he also has made public statements in the past about, like, I'm not sure about TIF. And now, like, he sees, especially in Charleston, how much growth we are experiencing because of our investment in the infrastructure. And, I mean, he's told me that he gets it. Like, in places like Shadow Lake, without that investment in the infrastructure, the houses can't come in without the roads, without the sewer, without those opportunities they will come. So like, using TIF for Forest Edge in particular, that's 294 units of apartments. And of course, there are the kids that live in those apartments when they move in there. And so like, the idea that overall, over that 25-year period, their revenue would be stagnant. And they're not losing anything, you know, they're just locking in what their existing rate is. Like, the tax rate that they were getting, the money they were getting for Shadow Lake, they're still getting that for the next 25 years. And then because of the investment that we make through TIF with the infrastructure, at the end of that 25 years, their rate is much higher. Their revenue is much higher than it would have been had we not made the investment to get it there. And so he gets that, and it's, we actually have a pretty good relationship. Plus, we work well with him, we use our funds to help with sidewalks and stuff like that. The redevelopment commission is looking at making a contribution to help with sound system over at the school and stuff like that. So as long as, I think as long as we keep that relationship. And we always have invited a school board member to come to our meetings too. So I think that helps.
I think there's been, I mean, you know, an evolution on TIF. And where it was even 10 years ago versus where it is now is being recognized as one of the few community development capital improvement funds that the local unit has at its disposal. And so through that, you may have the ability to invest in community development projects. The partnerships are there that were, you know, there were arranged marriages early on with the oversight and restrictions and additional statute and forcing the makeup of the boards, et cetera. But it's really evolved quite a bit, just as, I think, generally economic development and redevelopment is kind of evolved into something that's much more community development-focused. So I think that's always been, my takeaway is it's about that coordination, it's about that partnership, and it's about investing in the community, right, to deliver and deliver on the promises that, you know, you make to your citizens when you're growing your community.
But just so you all know that from a snapshot of a TIF, when we think about a TIF, all right, your assessed value, as it develops and the assessed value goes up, the schools don't get any of that money. That's why they was originally bucking the system and saying, "Well, without that money, you're just putting right back into that area and you're not spreading wealth." So there was also arguments about, like, fire districts and things like that not getting it. But I think, you know, the mayor's right, in the long run, there's more kids coming. The more kids you got coming to the school, the more money goes into the school from, say, government, so. I agree with that, but it's just from the, from the, looking from the outside, that's where that came from.
And even the fire districts, so, I mean, they, like, our local fire district this year applied for and received the tax levy appeal, same that we do. They got a pretty significant boost from the tax levy appeal, and they get that because the net assessed value of all the properties has gone up so much. And so again, that goes back to that, if you're not making those investments in the roads and the sewers and all those things, then you wouldn't necessarily see that big of a rise in your net assessed value. So even the fire departments are benefiting from it. So it's been, I think as long as we're, you know, continuing to stay open about it, I think that's what's helped us. And more people are getting more open about it and talking about it.
Any questions?
And to piggyback on that, in Shadow Lake, we actually did some drainage improvements there that helped the school. And that paving a quality court, an improvement in quality court, and that eventually the new light and rail crossing that'll be on the Christiane Parkway, then that will give them another way to get in and out of middle school. So they were very cooperative with that project as well.
Can I ask you a question? The drain, they was having issues with drains in Danbury Oaks. Did all that stuff help Danbury Oaks?
It's supposed to, yes.
Not Danbury?
No, with, 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 yeah.
Yes, it's supposed to. That, there's a, and just to get a little more detail, part of the drainage improvements was creating a basin there by the middle school in order to capture some of that because the neighborhood next to it was already having problems. And then if we develop out there, then, you know, whether that would have exacerbated the problem that they were having, it, optics-wise, it would have exacerbated the problem they were having. So it was supposed to take care of that. So moving on to redevelopment strategies, there are things called economic development agreements. Those, we've enacted in a number of projects. If, say, redevelopment commission was participating in a project, like Shadow Lake, Forest Edge, there's a number of others, then there would be an agreement to cement what obligations the city is committing and what obligations developer's committing to. Because you don't want to make a significant investment into a project without having some parameters about what each, what you're supposed to do, what they're supposed to do. It also takes into consideration, you know, if they say, "We're going to provide X number of jobs, or we're going to provide this much private investment," which in going through calculations to do TIF and financing to, for you to finance the project and to make sure that you can pay those bonds back, you know, they need to invest what they say they're going to invest. And this is a way to just cement that, hold your feet to the fire, hold the city's feet to the fire too. Because it can go both ways, where the city's committed to do something and they're supposed to do that. There's also some clawback provisions that can be in there. I mean, there's a lot of things on this list that would be included in development agreements. But what happens if the developer doesn't move forward and do that investment? Because in most of these projects, especially in Shadow Lake and Forest Edge in particular, that won't be assessed until it's completed. And it might be the year after that that it actually gets assessed, or the year after that, when it shows up on the tax rolls where you actually start getting money into those TIF districts that were created. So it's very important that they're doing what they say they're going to do and the timeframe they say they're going to do it in. Because all that is considered when we're doing, when you're looking at bond financing. As far as how are you going to pay that back in that interim? And then is the, are the taxes sufficient coming in to make those payments? In particular, on both of those development agreements for Forest Edge and Shadow Lake, there's a minimum taxpayer agreement in that or a provision. It says regardless of, regardless of what the tax rate is, that they would make a minimum payment that would cover your bond payment, basically. And Nick can explain that in more technical terms, I'm sure. But for me, that's what's important. But they are, they are on the hook to cover that, you know. Regardless of whether they constructed it or if it falls behind, then they're on the hook to pay for that so that you are not.
Jill, the only thing I might add is that none of the economic development agreements are negotiated in a vacuum. They're, you employ attorneys and financial advisors and consultants that assist to make sure that those things are ironclad and locked up and that everybody's roles and responsibilities are clearly defined, the timelines are clearly defined, and that there's protections built in for the city.
And as I said earlier, and as Nick just said, none of this is done in a vacuum. We had multiple meetings, with multiple discussions. The redevelopment commission, while they might propose doing it in TIF and have their own set of public hearings and resolutions, city council goes through the same thing. So it's very well vetted by the time it gets to you as city council, but then it's vetted again. And you do have, what we might do in analysis at the front end and say, "This is what we think this is going to bring and what you can get from that." And before anything happens, and Donna can attest to this because she's been through this a number of times, your financial advisor, Baker Tilly, comes in and they run the numbers. You have bond counsel attorneys that help to make sure that everything's buttoned up. And so you certainly, there's a lot of eyes on that. Other redevelopment strategies which the city has employed. Infrastructure improvements, we've talked about that, where you might require an extension or improvement or installation of something to accommodate growth and capital investment, whether that's new lift stations, new larger collection lines, roadways, drainage, any of that. Land acquisition and disposition. That example is at Forest Edge. If you all remember what that looked like before they tore all the buildings down, before things were moved out of there, you had some dilapidated buildings. People were dumping their trash back there. There may be a fire or two back there. There's a number of things that were happening. The city had acquired that, but because of all of that and just, you know, health and safety reasons, the redevelopment commission went in and demolished and removed all the structures on it just to try to cut that down. Then we actually went through an RFP process to choose, to employ, that property's been transferred to them, and now Forest Edge is at that. Will be the end result of that. Environmental cleanup and site readiness. Done that as well. So once you acquire a property like Forest Edge, we've demoed that, kind of cleared the site, made it look like it was ready for development. And in some instances, in redevelopment commissions, that's what they do. They take an unsightly area that people might be afraid to redevelop and use their tools at their disposal to make sure that it's environmentally clear or remove impediments that might be there for the private market to take it over, put it back on the tax rolls. So that's, you know, one of the simple function of, a simple explanation of a function of redevelopment. I'm going to ask Nick to talk about the next two, if you don't mind.
So as Jill was talking about, the property acquisition, infrastructure component. You can issue debt, a bond, to take on those things. You can pay for those out of cash on the hand. Those are all pretty standard and common procedures. The next two are a little more in-depth, a little more nuanced. The first one would be the TIF injection bond incentive. And so what does that mean? That basically looks at the project on its own merit and the tax increment that it would generate over the life of the project and being able to monetize that. And then the net present value forms, so basically taking that for 25 years worth of tax increment. And looking at what that looks like in today's dollar and being able to bond on that to, as an incentive, as an equity incentive to a development project. And so that happens, that could be, we've seen them where, you know, an entire property is isolated and it's set up in some TIF. You look at the merits of the project, the assessed value is enough, you issue a bond, whether it be for a full amount, that the project was generating TIF or for a portion of it and partnering in that way. It allows for a development to generally include certain elements that are otherwise out of the market. So it helps offset the risk that's associated with development. Allows you to have a competitive and market-based rents for your region. If it's a, say, a multifamily-type development, but your finishes, your both interior and exterior or amenities are a little stronger than what you would traditionally have otherwise without it. And so we often see the redevelopment commission, the community act as a partner, more or less, in the development and providing the net present value of cash flows from a tax increment into a deal, into the overall capital stack for a development. And so that occurred at a split level on Forest Edge. Not the full enough TIF was put back in the deal, but a portion of the TIF that that project was generating was put in the deal to be able to build to a scale and finish that otherwise a developer likely wouldn't do at a significant gateway component of the community. So that's one piece of it. The other piece, and again, these are all developer development-centric, is the developer purchase TIF bond. So in the first scenario, you issue a bond, you get money on that debt issuance, and you inject that back into the deal. And that's either backed by, guaranteed by the development partner or it's guaranteed by a larger TIF. And the developer purchase TIF bond, there's no actual exchange of monetized TIF at that point. That developer purchase bond, the developer acts as the bond buyer. And at that point, the benefit to the developer is more of an operational savings and that you negotiated some sort of equitable split of the TIF over the life of the TIF district. And then that is essentially when the development is created and fully assessed and they're, they get their first property tax bill and so on and so forth, that you get paying their property taxes to the city. City receives those property taxes and then would credit back a portion of those to the developer as the bondholder. So again, a little more nuanced of a tool, it's not an exchange of cash, it's more of an operational reimbursement. And I think of it as a longer-term tax abatement. And it, again, is done more or less to reduce risk on the front end for a developer and over time. So that way they're achieving the returns that they would need to otherwise have this, over some money in the community. Any questions on those?
So whether you realize it or not, the majority of the things we've talked about revolve around some type of TIF, tax increment financing. So we're going to switch gears for a minute and talk about build, operate, transfer. So that's something that has become more, I guess, more popular, for lack of a better term, in using as people have understood, you know, how you could use it. More state agencies and some federal funds can utilize this or some state agencies that utilize federal funds can utilize this process. But the traditional way that you would develop a project, say you're going to build a road, is you would hire an engineer to design the road. Or if you're going to build a building, you'd hire an architect to design the building. They would come back with a cost estimate and a scope. with a cost estimate and a scope, say this is, we're going to build three miles of road and this is what it's going to cost, this is what it's going to have in it. And then the, in your case, the board works or could be redevelopment commission would then bid that out. And then, so then contractor would bid that. And a lot of times, those projects may not be designed to the fullest extent, or it could be that costs have risen so much that when the engineer estimated the cost that, you know, it, it just came in quite a bit over, then you've got an issue with whether you can build what you want to build, whether you've got the funds to do it or scurrying around to find the funds and be able to do the project. And if it does come in and you award that contractor, that contractor, then there's changes that may happen during the project that they find, or they run into this, or this wasn't designed to this spec and we really need to do this. And so they come before, instead of board works or, or the redevelopment commission and say, we're going to need extra money to do this. We've encountered this issue or this is more than what we anticipated to be. So you have change orders, which then escalates the cost of your project. In some communities, that may not be an issue. In other communities, they have the money that they have and they need what they need within that budget. But there's no guarantee that you can get what you need within that budget in doing that. And the reason I say that in that way with build, operate, transfer, what that allows you to do is you can do your design, your construction, your financing. You can either do, either do land acquisition in that where you have a guaranteed maximum price. So what that does is transfers the risk from the city to the people that say they can do that project for that price. It eliminates those change orders, it eliminates that uncertainty. So that's something, it transfers the risk from you to the developer or the contractor, which has been very popular in a lot of communities in that they have seen where their cost just goes up and goes up and goes up, whether it be through change orders or the bid amounts. And this helps to ease their mind is if we have $650,000 to do this project and they say they're going to do it for $650,000, if the price of steel goes up or the price of asphalt goes up, they don't come back to you and ask you to pay for that. That's on them. That's their risk at that point and not yours.
Do you see many bids come in low, not when they're going to do change orders?
I would guess that some have. I can't tell you that for sure. I'm not an engineer or architect to know what anybody's put in those bids, but I've seen a number of projects and in my years and in my experience, Brian, I've done grant projects and they had X amount of dollars and that's all they had, you know, but I've seen that where they might have come in low or right at it knowing that they're going to have to do, because they might even say it before you award that, well, this isn't going to work, we're going to have to do this, this and this. So how are you going to come up with that extra money? So it can happen, it doesn't always happen. But then there are those other flukes where everything could have been designed, you know, exactly how it needed to be, but the price of, the price of fuel went up, or that happened several years ago with asphalt because the gas prices went up so much that asphalt prices just skyrocketed within a couple of weeks.
So on the flip side of what Brian's asking, working where I do, I see that, those prices and stuff like change orders and all that. Do you all, and I had to ask this before and I'm sorry, but do you all look at what somebody bids like for this? Do you look at that inflation to kind of compare the pricing of what it would be or?
As far as the build, operate, transfer?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen, I've seen people that put that bid a little bit higher. We tell them, hey, this is, this is about a dollar, you give it to us, that bid will kind of go up a little bit, just the opposite of what he's asking.
So.
Do we, do we see any of that?
What I've seen, depending on, you know, each, each developer, that's what I'm going to call the people that give you the guaranteed maximum price, each developer may handle this differently. The one that I've seen and has been involved in the ones at Charlestown have used is that there's a contingency that's in there. Everything's open book. So just like you would have a pay estimate from somebody who bid the project and have each of the line items, the BOTs are done that way too. So you see how much of what their profit margin is, you see what their contingency is. And some developers may give that contingency back to you if they don't use it.
Okay.
So it is open book and it should be open book. And if the city does anything and it's not open book, then that's going to be a problem later for state board accounts. The other thing that I've done for a long time is compliance. So I like to make sure that Donna has what she needs so to be able to answer a question if state board accounts asks. That's how I get in trouble pretty quick is if you can't do that. So it's all listed. You see what, you see what they're making on it, if that helps you.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they do give themselves a little bit of cushion just to make sure that they risk because if that, if they do miscalculate something, then that's all on them to pay for it, not on you. On the flip side, if the city decides that they want to do something else, then you can have a change order, but if it's something you initiated as the city, well, while you're out there, we'd like for you to do X, Y, and Z, then you can do that as well. And in particular with the build, operate transfers, the way they're set up in the city, whether redevelopment does it, whether a board of the works does it, whether the sewer board does it or wants to use that for a project, the city council is the ultimate decider and you're the ones to actually sign the agreement. So it goes through those other bodies, but eventually that will come to the city council where again, you will have someone explain what they're doing, what guaranteed maximum price is, what financing might be, if that's part of the package. And so you're very much involved in that process as well. So none of that happens without city council blessing that at the end of the day. I've been involved in some of these. One was for just land acquisition and demolition. So you can use it for a variety of things. And that was down at the riverfront in New Albany where they're doing their west riverfront. And now they have a nice boat ramp. There was some, so we assisted the city in acquiring some of those properties, demoing them, seeding and strawing it and demoed the old recycling center. They did all of that under this build, operate, transfer statute. We use it, we're using it right now at Shadow Lake. It's part of the build, operate, transfer agreement with Christianity and GM Development to build the roadways, to do the stormwater improvements. Everything that's there, including the railroad crossing and the signalized intersection. And we used it in Forest Edge to relocate a sewer line that was running, would be in conflict with the, one of the apartment buildings. So we used it in Forest Edge. The city actually paid cash for that, redevelopment commission paid cash, but used the build, operate, transfer process. And as far as procuring or selecting, the difference is with competitive sealed bids, you actually advertise it and get those bids, they're sealed, you have to take the lowest responsive responsible bidder. With BOT, you do a request for proposals. And so you're, you're requesting proposals from these developers, contractors, whatever your scope is. And they provide a team that says, we're going to do this, here's our experience. There's generally a committee. So if that was in redevelopment purposes, there was a committee for the, what we call them, Depot Street and Shadow Lake, that selected the people they wanted to use. Then they had in a proposal, we will give you the scope within X number of days, 60 days, we'll give you at least 30% of the construction documents and we'll give you a guaranteed maximum price. And then some of that, we put finance, it will also get bids for financing for you. So that was all in a proposal within that time period. They're doing that basically at their own risk, no cost to the city unless in their proposal, they say, we will need X amount of dollars for this scoping period. And then the city decides whether they want to do that or not. A lot of the ones that I see are zero dollar scoping periods. So they're doing it at their own risk. And then at that end of that period, then they will say, this is what our guaranteed maximum price is. And then that's when that goes through to the council and, and you decide whether, whether you want to do that or not. All on their dime, not yours. There's also another statute that's called design, build. And just in very simplistic terms, one of the differences there is that you must pay the, you must select three people to do a scoping period and you must give them a stipend to do their scope. And then at the end of the day, you select one of those based on the scope. So it's a little different. There's a little bit more involved on the city than, than build, operate, transfer. But the biggest thing is that you transfer that risk of overages to the developer. So you don't have to have them. That seems to be the big stopping point.
The question was, I mean, you hit it all.
Yeah.
But if I was not an ethical person, I could say, all right, here's a closed bid. I'm going to bid it 10% down because I'm just going to charge you 10% over.
Right.
My over and my change orders. That's my, that's kind of.
Well, and what I've found is that, and if you're around it long enough, then you see this, that some people don't design it 100% when they bid it. And so contractors are more sophisticated than they used to be, especially the larger ones. They have engineers on staff that will review plans and they can see where those holes are when they bid it. And that's, I don't begrudge them that because they're doing their due diligence, but that can happen. So do you all have any questions about, about that build, operate, transfer? I think that's something that the sewer board's considering for the Highway 62 lift station and, you know, lines that need to be connected to that force main to the wastewater plant and the force main and, and then the line underneath Highway 62. They, they're considering this. So that will eventually, if they go through that process, will eventually end up here to you to sign off on it at the end of the day. I'm going to let Nick talk about tax abatement because he is way more an expert on that than I am. Thank goodness.
Thanks.
You like taxes.
So tax abatement, just generally speaking, is a, is a tool that's at the disposal of, of the council. And so it is, it's, it's one that, you know, if you're giving a tax abatement in a TIF district, obviously there's some considerations that you have to make in those instances because it's deferring some of the assessed value, equivalent assessed value, assessed value in general within a TIF. But the tax abatements are, again, is a tool that's included by, by this body. And what it is, is the temporary phase of property taxes resulting from new assessed values. Again, we go back to new assessed value that wasn't existing, wasn't there before. And it's a, it's a, another development incentive. Commonly, tax abatement, and I list ERA tax abatement here, is something that you see with, with industry, industrial. So it's a very common tool that a lot of the adjacency of houses utilized to support those capital investments. Traditionally, we see a 10-year property tax abatement on real property, five years of personal reobtain improvements to the building, new building structures, building additions, personal property being, the equipment. The equipment needs to be used within production. There is a phase in schedule that it used to be standardized to where it was, you know, 100% abatement year one, 90% year two, 80, 70, 60 and so on. And similarly accelerated over a five-year period with personal property. Anymore, the schedule and length is largely at the disposal of the council. So you see like, as an example, River Ridge has a similar incentive, it's called Urban Enterprise, but it is a tax abatement. And so in that area, you have almost a 50% per year abatement. And so we've seen a lot of communities, particularly in industry, to level the playing field and mimic that, that deduction schedule. And so again, it's typically 10 years, typically that stair step there of 190, 80, but the council has at their disposal the ability to augment, alter the deduction schedule and the length to suit their needs as well as the developer's needs.
You said it was a 50%.
It is in River Ridge and.
For how long?
So in River Ridge, it's a 10-year period for, for real and 10-year for personal. But in most municipalities, it's 10 on real and five.
So you're saying that for 10 years, they give you 50% tax abatement? Is that what you're saying?
Within River Ridge, yes. And then if you were to do largely, if you were to do a, a standard stair step abatement of 10 years and 190, 80, 70, it's at the end of the, the period, it's about a 50% reduction in savings if you look at that. But we also see again, very commonly, Selberg, we did this on the larger industrial facilities that are along 31 near the airport. Those were within a TIF. The redevelopment commission wanted to still realize the returns from, from the capital investment a little earlier than what they would have if they would have had to wait for those first five years to kind of work through. So we did, and now we have a 10-year 50% on both of those buildings. And that way it allowed us to be, it was flexible, it was a comp in the market with what the other industrial areas were offering. It was really easy to build a lease around a standardized deduction schedule over the term of a lease period. And again, it was sort of matched market competition.
Do you recommend any difference between residential versus commercial?
So the ERA abatement is driven primarily for industry and commercial. When it comes to retail, various types of commercial and residential, traditionally, you can't do the tax abatement for them, it's ineligible unless you do what's called an economic development target area tax abatement. And so an economic development target area where EDTA is additional layer you put on top of your ERA when you establish it. And that EDTA allows you to do tax abatement for a multifamily residential as well as a retail. And so we've seen that in downtown areas or areas where you're trying to, that are outside of your TIF, where you're trying to generate multifamily or housing development, to utilize that as a, as a tool to get the investment more so than to try to inject some sort of funding in making it happen. And so it's a performance-based incentive is the way I see it. If you don't construct it and do it as you have to do, you don't see an incentive. And the value of your incentive is only based on, ultimately your assessment overall of the assessed value that's generated. That's related to the application of the reduction on yours. And there's annual compliance with it. Annually, they have to file their forms with this body as well as with the county. This body has to sign off annually that they have lived up to development they said that they were going to do or the investment that they said they were going to make. And so you approve that over the term. If there's anything that gets out of whack or out of line, you can.
Then it's right into the next page, isn't it?
Yeah, right there. So there are, the EDTA, it's on the next page. And so again, that is driven more towards these retail and multi are now allowed. You can do abatements on them now. But you have to go through the process of establishing the ERA and the economic development target areas. That requires approvals by resolution, by public hearing, the EDTA by, by recommendation as well. So there's a series of public approvals that one has to go through to be able to grant those, as well as the EDTA can only comprise 15% of the total geographic area of the community. So again, it's targeted in the sense of the name, any other function of it. Any questions on, on tax abatement?
I have something. So, so say the council granted me tax abatement and then I don't live up, one year I don't do my forms, I don't come before the city council, then what happens in those sense generally?
There's two outcomes. One, they just beg for mercy before this body and through public hearing, you can reinstate their tax abatement. We see that happen, it happened a lot during COVID. Folks got out of filing deadline requirements, they were working from home, they had sort of lost track. So we spent a large part of 2021 and 2022 getting folks back into compliance and working with them. We worked with City Jeff Jefferson annually to help them with their, their applications and, and work with folks and coordinating all that approval. So I do know at that point in time, there's a lot of issues that are called a waiver of non-compliance. So you have to have a public hearing on it and you have to hear the apology as to why they couldn't do it and the promise of, you know, we'll never do this again. And please reinstate us. You can do that then. Or you can choose to, to completely reject the tax abatement bullet from the, from the capital.
And then they pay 100% tax.
Yeah. Yeah, it's part of the resolution that you have. When you approve a tax abatement, there's a series of things that the recipient will commit to. When you approve a tax abatement, there's a series of things that the recipient will commit to. And compliance is one of those things. So it's completely within your authority to do all that.
Great question.
Well, I, you know, you hope that people are going to do exactly what they say that.
We all make mistakes.
But things happen and so, thank you, Nick.
So now we get to the last three pages actually, which are more case studies. And I talked a lot about Shadow Lake throughout the process, just to talk about how we've used some of those tools. But just to reiterate that on one page, and I've got a couple of diagrams for those that you haven't seen, for those of you that haven't seen it. So when the city was, when redevelopment commission first heard about Shadow Lake, part of the investment, private investment they were open this far was, of course, Dan Christianity Headquarters with their shop and their office, which you can certainly see now. And it should be finished in the next couple of months, I hope, along with some of the roadways that are cut in. But this gives you a little bit of a, on the, the top diagram on the right was a rendering of, it doesn't have their shop and their headquarters on it, but they also have additional property that they intend to sell for industrial use. So, and they've talked to a variety of developers and putting some, some larger industrial buildings on that in anticipation of that. And we've, as part of our due diligence and looking at the deal and looking at how much the city could bond and reasonably repay, then we made some estimations based on what the developer, what DC Develops, said they were going to do. And so they estimated that their headquarters and their investment and their office and shop was seventeen million dollars. And then they said that they would have, it's in their development agreements. One of those tools we talked about is in their development agreement. By X date, they will have an industrial prospect and a building on that site, one. And we estimated that being about a one hundred and sixty-eight million dollar investment. And that, those are the numbers that we use based on that development agreement and their commitment to do our four-point-five million dollar financing, to build all those roadways and to do the drainage and the signalized intersection. That's what we based that on. We also threw in, because as Nick talked about, industrial prospects and tax abatement and the city of Charlestown being so close to River Ridge, we baked in that fifty percent over ten-year tax abatement. Of course, the city doesn't have to grant that. But in the financing, just on the off chance that the city council would do that, and I'm sure that whatever, whatever company decides to develop those or build those industrial buildings will ask for that tax abatement, we have baked that fifty percent over ten years into our financing. So if you grant them the fifty percent tax abatement over ten years, that's not going to affect repayment of your bond. Which is something to think about. And Nick mentioned, you know, if it's tipped, then you've got it, and you have bonds on that and you need to think about that. So just knowing that that might happen, then we wanted to make sure the city was in the best position to offer that if you wanted to, but also not affect your payments and your, your revenue. And that was just on one building. If you see in that diagram, there's maybe four or more proposed. So as those buildings come online and more investment happens, and that's more money that comes into the TIF, and that gives you the ability, the city ability, to look at other projects within that area. The bottom diagram, the blue, the light blue on the bottom is what we call Shadow Lake. So that's the Christianity Headquarters as well as these industrial buildings and potentially some commercial retail on the highway. But the purplish area is Shadow Brook. And that is slated according to DC Develop, who's the developer of that area and the owner of that property, going to be more retail, but primarily residential. So right now, there's no way to get from High Jackson to that area unless you want to go across country. But for, for that type of development they're talking about, there's no way, you know, for anyone to get there. There has been some discussion about constructing a road from High Jackson to four oh three, but that's going to take a lot of money and probably multiple partners to get that done. If they can deliver on their commitments on these industrial properties, then that'd give the city more TIF revenue to participate in that if you wish to do so. But, so as far as public investment, going through some of the tools, we actually, this, this Shadow Lake area was part of the Central Charlestown TIF. But in order for us to realize the full span of the TIF for the twenty-five years, we took Shadow Lake out of the Central Charlestown TIF and created a new TIF. It's called Shadow Lake TIF. So if you see on the redevelopment packets that come to you, you'll see each of the TIFs in the fund reports separate. So there's Shadow Lake TIF there. And it doesn't have anything in it right now because that hasn't been assessed and, and the, the money hasn't actually come back into that TIF yet. But it's set aside for that, so we created that. We also did do a, a TIF and, and borrowed four-point-five million dollars to do the infrastructure improvements. And we're doing those infrastructure improvements through the VOT statute in that process. So we know at the end of the day that that project's going to cost us four-point-five million dollars, no more than that. And that's what we anticipated. We had the guaranteed maximum price and all of that prior to doing the TIF, which you would if you went the traditional route in construction bids. You, you can't do any of that financing until you know what your costs are, so. And then we have an economic development agreement, which we amended once already. The timelines that were in there, some of that slipped a little along with the structure and the timing of what the city was going to use their money for. So the redevelopment commission at the end of last year amended the development agreement. So we have new timelines in there and, and then shifted some of the funding for some of the roadways and that as well. And then future incentives on this, it could be that tax abatement. If someone purchases the property to build these spec buildings on, then they may very well come to the council and ask for a tax abatement on that building or buildings or whatever they're doing.
Is that most likely one?
Most likely, yes, it will. I would be surprised if it didn't. And that was one of the reasons that we made sure that we put in that fifty percent abatement, just to make sure that if you wanted to do that, that it wouldn't cause you an issue. Do you all have any questions? Any other questions about Shadow Lake at all?
Does that property run all the way up to the dog park?
Yes, it actually runs, it runs to the land that they donated to us.
Yes, the red wheeler land.
On that, that you see on the purple at the very top, there's like a funky little L shape.
It's really hard to see.
It's actually not part of Shadow Lake. Shaved it up, red wheeler, delivered to the city.
This right here.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's it.
It does. Fortunately, it backs up to the dog park.
And the other thing on that diagram, there's a yellow swath there, which is the Shadow Lake Park. So, okay, on to Forest Edge. So the private investment there, and I think my unit numbers are a little bit off. Those have fluctuated over the time period. It's more of the two-hundred-and-four units. And my guess is the investment's a little bit more than thirty-five million at this point in time. But that's what was utilized to do the two-and-a-half million dollars in bond proceeds that the city has, has committed to. As far as the tools and public investment, the city actually purchased all those parcels. And as I talked about earlier, we cleared those parcels off. We also did some environmental studies. As part of getting someone else to take over property that looks scary and seems would be very expensive to develop, then you want to try to mitigate some of that scariness, that fear. And so we did some environmental testing on that, some soil borings, to see if the soil was conducive to actually building anything on. And so redevelopment commission did all that as well. We did the build operate transfer, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand for infrastructure relocation and also for some soil remediation. Not saying the soil was bad because it was contaminated, but there was a lot of soil out there that, that wasn't, you, you really couldn't build anything on. So we used some of that money for that as well. And just for your information, especially for those of you who were not on the council when all this was going on, the sewer line that we relocated ran basically along what used to be that ditch that has now been filled in. It ran along that, so it would have gone underneath this big rat building or this C-shaped building, which is never good. I'm not an engineer, but it's never good to have sewer lines underneath the building. So when we discovered the manhole during the demolition process, we discovered the manhole that had been there, but was underneath some debris and junk and such that had been stored out there. So then we created a TIF for this area that was not in any of your TIFs. So we created a TIF for that. It's called Depot Street TIF, I believe is the way it's called. And then the city is providing two-point-five million in public, for public improvements there. And then we also have an economic development agreement with them, which includes minimum taxpayer agreement as well as Shadow Lake does as well. And there are timelines and commitments in there too. Part of our commitment that's in the development agreement, redevelopment commission is, is doing, we participated in the match for the High Street improvements. So the paving of that was done through community crossings. And the new sidewalks on High Street from Highway three to the Forest Edge property, redevelopment commission paid for that match for that. And that was a commitment that we made. We also made a, a commitment of giving them two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars toward site contingencies if they ran into some more bad soils and such, that we had that. And then they actually paid the city two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the property too. We don't anticipate any additional incentives there. They're not going to come back and ask for tax abatement. Correct me if I'm wrong, the minimum taxpayer agreement kind of takes that off the table for the tax abatement.
All negotiated out through the economic development agreement. There's debt that's on that property and they've got to deliver it before.
So. Then the last one I have is just, doesn't have anything to do with TIF for some of these other things other than, as Nick said, the TIF funds are for, in support of or benefiting the TIF and something that would benefit the TIF and your assessed values is to do these facade improvements. So the redevelopment commission sets aside about fifty thousand dollars a year to help improve the outside or the sides of some of these structures, which you've seen, if you look around the square, you've seen that. A lot of buildings around the square, you said. Actually, the Coffee and Cream and the Ryan Hodgkins and City Hall. And there's several on this side of City Hall that have utilized it. We put in some before and after photos here of some that aren't on the square, like the Big Gene improvements, that was one of the first ones that came in, looked so much better and you can see that on your way in. I didn't realize that until I started to drive past it, figured out where it was. I thought, oh, that looks bad, and it looks so much better now. But since twenty twenty-one, when that program was actually enacted, we've, as redevelopment commission has awarded about one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars for nineteen sites. Some of those might be duplicative where they can come back and ask for something else. But the one of the case in point is the old Zeiss building across the way that was just purchased by outward bound people. So Mr. Zeiss had done some work on the outside of the new door and some new windows and awnings. They came and are going to do the other side, the side that you can see from Highway three that needed some new windows and, and some, a little bit of care. So the thought is to incentivize people to make those improvements. We reimburse up to fifty percent of their project cost, up to ten thousand dollars. So right now, with that one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, we have leveraged about five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. A lot of people do more than that, just twenty thousand dollars. The fire department used the facade money as just to help them pay for some doors and lighting, but they spent so much more on that building. But this incentivizes them to, to do that, so. And then the last two pages are just that TIF vocabulary if you want to look at that. I know that was a lot. Brian, is there anything you think we didn't cover that you have questions about?
I think it's great, this is exactly what I was looking for. I mean, being, being new to the council, I was hoping that they come across with really great stuff. And sometimes it just flies over your head. And so if you don't know any of this, then that's my hope, and Jill can watch you a great job.
Thank you. And like I said, you get all our redevelopment commission packets. You've got my contact information, just reach out if you have any questions whatsoever. And I think this might have been before you got here and we talked about the bonds and such. And I know that we sat down with you and talked about Forest Edge, you know, separately, sat down and, and tried to figure out, you know, what questions you might have before it even gets to you and try to, to run through that, just to make sure we're prepared, so.
We, it's a great resource anytime, they're awesome.
Thank you. Anything else, Mary? That's it, any other questions?
I've, I've had lots of sitting down with Jill. I mean, we sat for two and a half hours and it was amazing. So a lot explained, if you haven't done it, do it. It's well worth the time, I promise.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The impactful clues are at our meeting.
Might get one for the jurors.